We're about from executive session at nine thirty-five. Chris, would you like to report?
We entered into executive session on items three A as well as four D pursuant to council moving to executive session. No action was taken on either item in executive session and three A was not an action item. So with the mayor's approval, this will be taken at four D. Issue on four D was a CNA to address complaint filed by Mayor Council by City Manager Andy Johnson this time.
After meeting with council in executive session and the discussion that took place and reaffirmation of duties between the city manager and the council and the agreement to maintain that, I, City Manager Andy Johnson, withdraw my complaint filed against Council one member.
Would any of the council would care to be?
I don't think there's any issue for the council to take on this one. I don't think we, when this issue was read into the record, there was an action by the council withdrawing it should not require action from the council.
From a legal opinion, it's one of those areas that could go either way. Formally accepting the withdrawal is one to kind of put everybody or the action is any right to withdraw complaint at any time. So that's for the council. I don't have, I don't have a straight black and white legal opinion on that.
Would you feel comfortable if the council would take a vote to accept?
Do you think you have a motion on that to accept Andy Johnson's?
We don't like to vote on it. We don't like to vote on it.
It might be a motion.
My, yeah, well, just my main concern would be the, you know, the one that the complaint was filed against, you know, is already requiring that no action be taken. Or, or just to, just to accept the withdrawal of the complaint. Is that all that's needed?
Well, in the executive session, we're letting him to come out and say it's, it's the first non-issue, but it's really, it's, to be honest, from a legal perspective, it's Mr. Johnson's withdrawal. So he's going to withdraw, essentially, the council to accept the withdrawal.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to accept City Manager's withdrawal of the complaint.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guerrero to accept the withdrawal. Second by Councilman Olin Castillo. All in favor?
Five.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now we're going to go on to four F. Consideration and action to have four A board take over operational responsibility of the event center.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a joint meeting with the four A board and because the agenda, and this was back, I think it was on the eighth of February, because the agenda item was to have the four A board take responsibility for the budget of the four A corporation. We could not take action to what was agreed to in that, that joint meeting. And in that joint meeting with the four A board, the intention was to give the four A board responsibility of the total operation of the event center. This is one of those interesting areas in that the four A budget legally for the Economic Development Corporation is separated from some of the event center operations that are coming out of the general fund. That being said, we could never totally eliminate city staff's involvement in the operation of the event center. And our comptroller maintains the books and the city manager authorizes a number of pieces in there, but the goal was to give that four A board overall responsibility for the operation of that facility. I don't know exactly how we should word this, Andy, that's going to be comfortable for, for you, and I know Mr. Gleason's here, I can see the top of his head, and, you know, I'm interested into, his comments on this as well is, we need to formally do this as a council, give them that responsibility, and that was my intention here. First, Andy, do you have any requests or comments on how we should word that?
No, Councilmember Miller, my only thing is to ask Mr. Gleason to see if the board is ready to undertake this, this challenge. As always with any board, we always offer the city staff support and anything that we can do to facilitate the, the success of such board. There are many obstacles that we have to overcome. This is not going to happen overnight. I would suggest that it's going to be a progressive thing done in stages, and I think that it would behoove our board and City Manager Johnson with the guidance of the council to embark upon a study as to how we can do this in a measured and progressive state. We can't, the board is not prepared at this time to just take over tomorrow. That won't happen. And be successful, I think it can, it can and probably should happen over a period of time in progressive steps designed so that the board can get control of pieces of it and then put it all together. That's my thing, and I, we have discussed this in board meetings, and we have to have a plan of action, not just say, you know, a four A board has control of it. Because obviously, there are many factors considered, budget, manpower, just to make a few, but make, all those things have to come in, and we have to be prepared with a plan for each one of those steps. And what I would like to see the council word this in a matter that it would be a progressive takeover over a period of time in conjunction with the city manager and advice of the council as we go through each step. And I would hope that it would work that way. I think that would be the logical way to proceed. And four A board needs a lot of information. We've been, we've been asking for some, we've got some, we need some more about budgeting, we need some more about how much funds are going to be available to us to do this, and a plan, and we've got the development plan. And I think that it's going to be very important, we'd be consistent with this plan and do it as a planned procedural and progressive procedure rather than just try and dump it all at one time.
Mr. Gleason, would you mind elaborating what taking over operational responsibility means?
That's something that needs to be defined, and that's one of the things that has to happen in the, the cooperation of the council and the city manager. If you're talking about managing the day-to-day operation, getting filters on the air conditioners changed, getting set up for stuff like that, taking bookings, the maintenance of the building, that's one thing. If you talk, are talking about hiring personnel, if you're talking about developing our own operating procedures, that's going to take time. And that's why I think that needs to be defined by the council as to what you want us specifically to do, and at that time, when we have, you know, we see exactly what you want us to do, then we can develop a plan as to how to do it.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
When you were in charge before it was turned over to the city, did you have a plan?
We were developing a plan, and we had been in operation about a year when we, we didn't have the, the first thing that came about was the accounting responsibility. We didn't have the money to hire an accountant, and we were totally dependent on what the city was giving us as far as numbers, and we couldn't get a straight set of numbers for that. That's why when we came back to the city and said, "We can't do this without some kind of support mechanism." At that time, it was, City Manager Johnson said, "Well, we can take over that function."
Who's taking care, I'm sorry, who's taking care of the, of this responsibility right now?
The city. And this was the discussion, and this is the biggest challenge to the event center, is the four A corporation and that board was really created to manage the debt service, i.e. that bond we talked about, that 2010 general obligation refunding bond. That was their responsibility. Well, then, we got an alcohol license, and well, that got tagged into the four A. All of the rest of the pieces to do with the four A fall out of the general fund. So we had a board that was responsible for the event center, but they were responsible for paying the debt and buying the liquor and keeping it in account of it. Nobody else was doing anything else in there other than the city. Now, the city manager's job, in addition to managing the city, is now an event center coordinator, okay? And, and we have maintenance people. Well, that's not going to change, but where we talked about, and I think what Mr. Gleason is leading to is, how do we migrate the operation of that facility from a, a city hall-run event center to a board-run event center? And those things are going to include SOPs, and they're going to include agreements to do, who's going to do the maintenance? And this is going to be an, an evolving process. And I like Mr. Gleason's comment of, "Let's phase this in," and that also falls in line with the goal or target we accepted in this insolvency plan that says reduce the event center operating cost to within 125% of its revenue by fiscal year 2015. Can we word the motion in such a way that in conjunction with city council and city staff, that the four A board work to an operational control of that facility by fiscal year 2015, 2016?
That's a, that's a good summary of what I was trying to say.
I like, from a legal perspective, that works out well too, because there are some IRS issues involved, because there's tax exempt bonds and management contracts involving those, get into some sticky stuff. So giving it some time to work and go to get towards definitely is a good.
And our attorney tells us that there are some issues, legal issues, that are going to have to be resolved before we can get into this, just like I'm sure what you're talking about. You know, there, one thing you need to bear in mind, there are two separate budgets when we come to the four A. There's the O and M, the operation and maintenance, and then there's the tax situation, paying off the debt, the sales tax. That's a totally different budget than the operating maintenance, and they have to be kept separate and completely defined. And we know pretty much where we are on the, the sales tax type budget, but the O and M, the operating and maintenance of the building is a, you know, we're going to have to do a lot of work on that.
Eddie, are you okay with that timeline? Okay, so can I make the motion that in conjunction with council direction and the city manager's office, that the four A board take over operational responsibility of the event center by year 2015, 16? That's fiscal year, fiscal year, yeah.
Does that include the financials and everything? Do they pay their own bills?
Well, you know, ultimately, it's never going to happen that way, because we're going to have to fund, as we are today, much of the operation and maintenance, and we have a fund called Events Center, okay? But that board would be setting that operational budget and looking at those pieces by year 2015, 2016, and we can work together as we go through this three-year budget cycle to account for these numbers. As, as Bill said, you know, the tax end of it and the O and M piece of it is going to be challenging, but we have to be working towards that goal.
And I can foresee the time that we would come to you with a budget and say, you know, this is what we expect our expenses to be, this is the income we have to have, and, you know, we would, it would be a budgeting item that we would come to you with and say, this is where we are. And, you know, whether we have to fund it, whether we are running ahead of our budget, whatever, but that would be something we can keep you advised of, and in your budget process, you know, try to run into that one, one, two, or 125% of our, our income.
Councilman Miller, will this work in, will this timeframe work in conjunction with the audit, with the audit committees?
Absolutely. It appears that, in that, that we're looking by year 2015, 16 to have our three-year budget cycle already in place and moving. It ties in line with the refinancing of the event center, it ties in line with the 125% operational goal that we had set for the event center, and I think those are the key goals that will help this board develop that. And they've already started, you know, from, from SOPs to fee schedules, to how we're going to deal with nonprofits versus for-profits. They've begun that process. What this direction does is give them that authority to continue down that road.
And the good thing about it is that city staff is willing to work with.
I've had very good success working with City Manager Johnson. We have met several times this, during this calendar year, and I think that it's going to be incumbent upon us to meet on a regular basis to decide what we can do, what we can't do, and then what we, if we need guidance on that, we'll be back to the city council asking for permission to do this, or, you know, what are your suggestions for this? And we're open to suggestions. We don't have a corner on the market of new ideas. So, you know, we're open to suggestions, but I think a lot of it will depend on the cooperation between the council, City Manager Johnson, and ourselves.
Okay, is there any citizen comments on this?
What's that, what was that question, Madam?
If there's any citizen comments on that, this issue? Mr. Gleason, I would like to say that you have a very good board set up, and I've been to your meetings, and y'all are really on a good start, and I know that y'all can get to that point you were talking about.
I do have a good board, and-
A working board?
It's a working board. They want to be active, they want to accomplish goals. I think we're, we're going to have some, you know, there's going to be some difficult decisions to make, and we're going to come to you with some things that may seem like, you know, "Why aren't you making this request?" But we'll have a reason for it, and we'll, we'll outline those reasons as we come to and deal with those problems as we come to them. Fee requests on such as nonprofits and things like that. That's going to be a very touchy issue.
Staff and council will be ready.
I second the motion.
The motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Aldean, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries five zero. Now we're going to go on to number five, managers' report slash update.
With my agenda, Mayor. Managers' report update specifically on the permit inspection complaint from a citizen received by Councilman Miller and wanted a report by this date. Is that still something that you wanted to bring to mind?
Can we table that specific report till the next council meeting? I think the next items might clarify some of those issues, and if we don't need to bring it up specifically next council meeting, we're generally, but I think the next couple of questions are going to really solve a lot of the issues. Okay, and?
Now we're going to go on to item six, discussion and possible action. A will be legal opinions regarding actions to the audit committee.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to combine my discussion on two A, or six A and B together. You know, we tabled, or actually, we declined the resolution limiting legal contact to the office of the city manager because of some of the wording that was in that. And the experience that I had on the audit committee, although it ended very, very well, really amplified the challenges that existed, in that a number of legal opinions were sought over the actions of the legal, of the audit committee, but those actions weren't, or those opinions weren't sought by the audit committee themselves. And, and that really brings to question this issue of, how do we do this? And it also brings to question the hierarchy of citizens, council, city manager, city staff. In discussion with Mr. Huggen after the meeting, and I don't know where that discussion has gone, as it related to this resolution, how can we put this resolution together that is comfortable for everybody and that we ensure that legal services aren't abused, okay? The city manager's office is clearly responsible for the operations of the city. Many staff members, many committee members may need council advice. Those questions absolutely need to be going through the office of the city manager. And once a month, or once a quarter, a report provided to council that says, "These are the questions being asked, this is the money that we're spending on that." As it relates to council members seeking advice, the issue was ensuring that everybody knew who was asking what question, or that the question was asked by a council member, that everybody knew what the question was, and two, that the answer was provided to the entire council. To try to simplify that, we said, "Let's go through the city manager." Well, I have some issue with that. Or, "Let's go through the mayor, which is a non-voting member, but also by city charter has no administrative duties," okay? What would limit, no limitation on council members seeking a question from council? So long as we directed council to, "When that question was received, you notify the entire council on what the question is." And when the answer is submitted, you give it to the entire council. And I think we solved the issue. We don't bog down the city manager's office with requests for legal advice by the council, and we don't limit council's access, council as in city council, to legal counsel, and we have full visibility on what's being asked and in what category. And we went through this issue before of how much was being spent in legal advice for planning and zoning versus other pieces. And although I don't expect to resolve that tonight, I would propose that that would be an acceptable resolution on this. And, and that ties together with the item we tabled and to these two items on the agenda, that if we can put that questioning process in that manner, I think we'll do well. Now, since we discussed this, Chris, is there any hiccups to putting the resolution together that way?
I don't think so. If council agrees on it, we can have the resolution done and have it in. But it's up to the council to decide if that's how they want to proceed. After a lifetime, until there's a council approval on how to proceed, we don't want to draft up a resolution or anything like that.
Now, do, as council, does that seem like a reasonable way of dealing with access to the legal counsel?
May I inject something that I need to inject tonight? And I'm here for that purpose. I mean, your permission is that you have it for Mr. Miller and Madam Mayor. I did not plan to be at this meeting, as most of you know, but I need to ask you to consider, apropos the topic you're discussing, unsolicited from you, a brief executive session on the item you tabled. I got a call tonight already concerning if you actually take it or wouldn't be here, I would like to at least share with you my opinion, if you so choose to receive it.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss-
See advice from council?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I'll give it to you in a second. John, John, it was fine. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, is there any clarification on to what tabled item you, Ms. Rogers, referring?
Yes, the item is the one having to do with-
Four E.
Four E.
Four E. Because we haven't, we haven't annexed that. Should we annex everything that we, everything that's there that has a separate connection with the city, would be subject to the city's responsibility to pursue or to water everything. So we have a right to say, "No, no, 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 no." We told you no, and you went around us, so we're still going to tell you no. But I guess our lawyer is pushing you to get it first.
What are they in their meeting, huh? Item fourteen, the non-standards. Could they be, could they be on?
It was tabled. Non-standards, J agreement regarding the votes. And they tabled that ending the, what was it, the?
Some study that's not, having for another year.
He wanted a one-harm. He wanted a one-harm.
What's that got to do with the individual council members?
Not to worry about me, I'm a girl.
City attorney with their own question.
Nothing, actually.
We're in law, a lot. Right now, I don't fuck you.
Interrupted and asked for you.
An executive session, again. Executive session is with councilmen. Exactly.
The question that they were discussing around something that they had discussed-
Something they had discussed.
Oh, yeah, I did all my stuff, but it's not about me.
He was just wanting to-
That's not what I'm saying.
I thought I was leaving, yes.
Still got two hours left of this one.
We are coming back from executive session at ten twenty, no action taken. Okay, as we continue.
Madam Mayor, I just go back, I think there was a misunderstanding as to the tabled agenda item that was the cause of most- of us to go into executive session. And the tabled agenda item was new business item E, CNA to approve the non-standard ETJ. And that was the cause of going into executive session.
But nothing changed?
No action taken.
So, now, we're going to go on to item six, C, update of the 10-year master plan, complete with projected costs, priorities, and time table, as well as potential funding sources.
Madam Mayor, can we, back up, I don't think we actually finished six B regarding the council resolution on contact with legal council. It was discussed. Can we ask council to draft that sort of resolution? Would this council be comfortable with it? Do we need a motion? Do we need...
Yeah.
Okay. I would make the motion to direct council to draft that resolution as it was discussed here by council for presentation and approval at the next city council meeting.
And if I could just be clear here, so it's for city council members, as the questions come to council, legal council. Legal council then responds to all city council members with the, both the question and the answer to that question. For operational questions, they go to the city manager. The city manager then relays them to legal, and then on a, I guess there was no time...
Monthly or quarterly, and I think that would be at the recommendation of the city manager, whatever he's comfortable with.
A report of a legal question would be presented to the city council at that report.
So, the motion on the table?
I second.
Motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Delidias, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Motion carries five to zero. And that's what people are being running.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Six C, six D, and six F were all addressed in the insolvency turnaround plan that was accepted by this council. And I think we're, as far as timelines on that, that should be fine. I don't think there's any action or... C, D, and F. Okay. Given the way we are wording the resolution for council's involvement with legal, I would move to table six E until we see that resolution, so we can use some of that same language in agenda item requirements. So, I would move to table item six E until the next city council.
Okay, the motion to table item six E, do I have a second?
One second.
The motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Delidio, all in favor?
All right.
And instead of going into a report from the comptroller, I can tell you that we did receive in our meeting packages many of the unobligated fund balances. And that report, I'm sorry that we're four months into this to get there, but we are there and we are moving forward. I did identify to the city manager those funds that I had not received, the fund balances on, I expect to receive those either tomorrow or sometime this week so that I can complete my pieces. And I think the rest of the councils had a chance to look at those numbers as well. As a result, I don't think there's any further discussion or action on item six G.
Okay, we got, we adjourn the meeting. And...